I have a call this meeting to order. Uh, we met compliance with official notifications. Um, roll call, Nick.
Nick Olson.
Here.
Brooke Taylor.
Here.
Nick Schumacher, I'm here. Sarah Schubert-McConne.
Here.
Vice President Ed Gallagher, acting as president.
Here.
Laura Gavsky.
Here.
You. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It does not be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting, as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any topic, top, any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comment signup sheet by the entrance or at Ann's desk table. Um, prior to the start of the meeting, the board requests restraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board and will be restricted to three minutes in length. Action taken at today's meeting is to forward the recommendation for final approval at the next regular school board meeting, Monday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. First topic is comments by members of the public, which there are none, so we'll skip to the superintendent for her report.
Thank you. Um, my first item tonight is informational item from Four Corners with uh app update. Welcome, Kim.
What? Good evening. Nice to see you again. It's like we just had spring and now we're.
We'll see you tomorrow, too.
You will. That's right. I'm looking forward to it. Oh, and there we go. All right. Um, so I'm going to talk a little bit about where we are this fall and kind of what we've already been doing. You know, a little more than thirty days into school, a lot of stuff has already happened and we've already had a lot of things that that I'm excited to talk about. So um, first and foremost, the transition and the change in boundaries we know happened this uh this fall. Right now, we've got two hundred students in our building pre-K five, which is about thirty-one more than last year. Um, our kids are transitioning, transitioning incredibly well. I see them just melding right in, making friends, making connections, um, you know, volunteering in class. It's it's really a pretty cool thing that's happened. Um, I think, you know, in in all of the preparation that we had has definitely paid off. You know, the kids coming into the building last last spring and getting to, you know, meet some of the staff but and get to know the building a little bit helped helped tremendously. I think I think it helped the kids and it can help the families. Uh, we already had our first family night this year in September, so we worked with our PTA to kind of have a welcome to Four Corners family night. We watched, we had a movie and popcorn and and did some fun different things. Um, we had over a hundred students and families in attendance, which was great, considering it was a stunningly beautiful evening. And we still had that many people show up, which was pretty exciting. Um, and since that time, our PTA has really worked hard this year already, making a lot of personal connections with our new families, you know, checking to see what do you need, you know, letting them know the opportunities that to get involved with our building and finding out um what things they would like to see maybe that came from their other buildings that we could incorporate into into what we do. Uh, so celebrations. First, our PLC teams, um, our professional learning communities are meeting regularly. They've established new norms, um, so their their expectations for how how they work as a team and have established goals for themselves for the next thirty days. So what do they want to accomplish within the next thirty days? And when I get to our um action steps for our CIP, I'll see how that ties in. We have done our initial fall fast bridge testing. Um, and what we saw, we were pretty excited, is that there was minimal summer slide. You know, every year we tend to see these, you know, really great scores in the spring, and then we come back in the fall and kind of dive into the dirt. We did not see that, so that's that was pretty exciting. Um, our PBIS team also has worked super hard this year. They, we met this summer uh for a full day to plan some of the transition activities for the beginning of the year. We looked a lot, excuse me, and talked a lot about what do we want our school community to feel like? What norms do we want to set place for our school community? We kind of saw this as an opportunity to almost, okay, if we want to change anything, now's a great time to do it because we're we're going to be starting kind of from the bottom with everybody and reteaching everything. So um, we'll get to that in a little bit. One of the things that they worked on and developed, we call the Falcon Way, which I'll show you in a minute. And then since uh school started already, we've had our first two family, our first two celebrations, our first two assemblies. Um, I stole this idea from from other buildings that have done this, so we have a monthly assembly at the end of the month to celebrate all of the things that have happened in the building. So the classrooms of the week, the we give out a um star player award each week to students who has showing good sportsmanship on the playground in FIAID and the before after school program to really be helpful, encouraging, supportive. So we celebrate all those things. Um, we have a new mascot, and so we got to, we have a contest for named mascots, so we named our mascot just last Friday. The kids were pretty excited about it. Um, made their appearance at uh the Spartan one. Yes, yes, made their initial appearance at the Spartan Olympics, and I was lovely, so our new mascot's name is.
Do you force the word that outfit?
What's that?
Would you force to wear the outfit?
That's what I was thinking.
Real folk. I was just saying, there's one teacher I think you could give.
Yeah, I don't think so.
What's the name of the mascot again?
Talon. It's like Talon, the Falcon, yeah. We had quite a few, and that's that's what they picked overall, so. Um, and it's gone really well, and we're also taking this as an opportunity to work with our kids to incorporate some of those things for, you know, the public events of how do we behave in an assembly, you know, what's appropriate? We've worked a lot on um some of the, like the silently clap and the snapping, you know, being aware of kids that have sensory needs and, you know, that it doesn't, it's okay to cheer sometimes, but what are some other ways we can celebrate that aren't quite so so jarring? And they've really taken to that. Um, so here's what we came up with as far as the Falcons way, and we talked a lot as a PBIS team that we have a building matrix, you know, what is what is work respected belong look like in the hallway, in the bathroom, in the cafeteria? And what we said was, that's really complicated for kids. And we still teach those things. We still go over them with kids. We still reinforce them. But we said we really need something that is pretty simple, something families could get behind, something kids could get behind, and we said, if if we saw these things every day, things would would be hunky-dory. So we decided that as far as for work, all Falcons are ready to learn. We follow directions. We do our best. We have a growth mindset and persevere. Um, all Falcons respect. We treat each other as we want to be treated. We respect every person and every idea. And we take pride in our school and our materials. And then for all Falcons belong, which is our focus for the month of October, uh, we help each other. We're responsible for our own actions and we include others. All right, so some of the challenges that we've experienced. Um, I don't think we're any different, you know, than the other buildings. We're definitely experiencing some growing pains and some changes, um, which was to be expected, and we've learned that flexibility this year more than ever has really been been key for all of us in order to make it work. Um, we're going through some of the adjustments in the master schedule and things as as we notice changes that need to be made to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all the kids uh across the board. And the staff um that are working in the multi-age classrooms are really working through that. They're doing a phenomenal job. It's a lot of work to figure that out. It takes a lot of collaboration, a lot of conversation amongst the teams of teachers to figure out exactly what that's going to look like. To make sure that the kids are receiving grade level instruction, plus the intervention, plus the extension, and all those things we know they need.
How many classrooms do you have this year that are age?
So we have um three sections of second, third together, and we have three sections of four, five.
Okay.
And then kindergarten and first are separate. All right, so our goals and our progress up to this point. So this year, our goal is really, as it was last year, to improve overall student proficiency in ELA, particularly in reading. Um, and the kind of our, that's our overarching goal. The sub-goals really are that our K one students are going to be a hundred percent. Twenty-one students will be at or above fifth percentile according to the state reading screener that we know is is taking effect this year. Actually, uh, we said that seventy percent or more of our students in grades two through five will be on track or low risk, according to fast bridge A reading. But the bottom line is we want a hundred percent of K five making typical or aggressive growth in reading from fall to spring. Because we know that that growth is is so important. Um, so the current status, where are we at? So just this fall, we uh, like I said, gave the the fast bridge and fifty-nine percent of our students in K five are currently low risk or on track. So that goal of seventy percent or better is definitely attainable. I can see where we're going to get there and hopefully beyond that. Um, our PLC teams, like I said, are meeting consistently, establish norms. They have a common process for taking notes, for communicating information between one another. Um, and they've also individually completed a a self-assessment to see where they feel like they are as a team. Tomorrow, we're actually going to sit down and kind of talk through some of that. And then they'll do a a team assessment and then set a goal based on that. So September thirtieth was our last professional development day. Um, we devoted that to really reestablishing the why for the the PLCs. Um, that model, evaluating our student fast bridge data to determine what skills we needed to work on with students um in terms of remediation, but also for students in terms of an extension piece. And then on October second, which was just last Wednesday, um, we really engaged in a discussion of what are those core components of a effective PLC? And then they set a goal for themselves for the next thirty days. And then each Wednesday, um, from here on out, we're going to focus on the different components and characteristics of an effective PLC, creating the next steps for their teams based on what we learned. Tomorrow, we're going to focus on uh, building culture and building that that culture of collaboration within their PLC teams. So our action steps, um, we've accomplished a lot of these already. So our first action step was that each team will establish norms, assign roles, and keep all notes and agendas in a shared folder. Why is that important? Even in a small building, we know communications key, so we want to make sure that our specialists um, know what's going on amongst the teams because they can't be at every team meeting, so they want to know if, for example, our EMLSS teacher is going to support second and third grade, but she didn't make it to the meeting that week. She needs to know what's going on. Um, they are next going to determine essential, and actually, we've determined essentials already several years ago. We're going to go back revisit and make sure that based on the current standards, yes, this is still what's important. Yes, these are still the things that no matter what, every single student will leave this grade level having either know or be able to do. Um, and then breaking those into learning targets, which are really those stair steps towards meeting that particular standard. Um, because we know that when we look at a standard like, we'll read grade level uh grade level reading. What does that mean? You know, we'll read at grade level. There's a lot of steps involved in order to get a student there. Um, we're also going to develop and deliver and analyze our first CFA for the year. Uh, utilizing the benchmark screener to inform instruction, um, and that was done on September thirtieth. Each team has completed their initial self-assessment. And then, like I said, our next step is for them to do that as a team, um, to have a conversation about what do they really want to focus on as a team and what's going to be their goal for the next thirty days? And then our leadership team will be meeting to take a look at the results of those self-assessments, and that'll help us plan our instruction as far as professional development moving forward, what our staff needs.
One question, go back to your the goals. I was curious, I'm I'm curious on how we come up with the goals. Are they goals because that that's what was attained last? Goals because there's room for growth from from last year to this year?
There's room for growth. We, so our goal has, the last features has been a hundred percent, and a hundred percent of growth is our goal. Um, but we really talked about, we talked a lot about setting that percentage of students who will be proficient in reading at a hundred percent versus a hundred percent will grow. Um, and what we kind of settled on is that absolutely we need a hundred percent of the kids to make a year's worth of growth or better. But looking at our scores and in some of the places, we realized, okay, that the percentage of kids that are proficient is important. The percentage of kids that grow, we decided is a lot more. So that's kind of where we got got to that.
Great. And I have one action item. Um, so we've begun the strategic planning process. Um, phase one of the strategic planning process was identifying mission, vision, and district commitments as well as district pillars. This is really intended to be the foundation for our next work in phase two, which begins in about a week or so. Um, Kate, would you like to say anything more about the process or what we have here?
Stand, but I can see all your faces. Um, what you see should look familiar to you, uh, put together by Joe Schrader, our consultant that we did together. All of you, again, I thank you for your presence. I think it was super important that you're you were there in your voices and you kind of experienced the process with um, a number of uh additional stakeholders. Um, so throughout that, then he create, he just put them into a more same document from our notes as we went along. Um, and then an outline, uh, like Amy said, of where we will be headed in October when he returns on the sixteenth to really capture the details around the strategic, the strategic objectives within the pillars. So again, I'm happy to engage just in more conversation, but I know you were all there.
You're all there, James, still. That felt good. That doesn't always happen, so thank you all. We're all participating in that.
I thank you for your work and feedback as we move along.
Can you just elaborate for all our listeners at home? Uh, all this, all the stakeholders involved in creating this, so it's not just us?
Oh, absolutely. Um, so we had a team of, I believe, twenty-six people present on that day. We had asked for uh instructional staff interest, and then we tried to make sure that we had a variety of instructional staff from different grade levels, buildings, subject areas. Uh, so we had a mix of instructional staff. Uh, we also had all of you present, and we had additional parents who were not just board members, but also parents in the community, as well as administrators from each level, elementary, middle, high school, had a couple of directors join um, as well. And then we were placed in kind of mixed groups so that we worked through a lot of pieces of data initially, kind of setting the stage for what what's the current reality? In addition to our discussion and the data that uh we put together, we also uh, did send out a survey to the community at families, staff. Uh, we had over five hundred responses in a relatively short time and not a great time of year. Welcome back to school. Please do a survey. Uh, so I was really happy with the amount of responses that we gathered, and that was a big, that was a focus of one of the table groups to go through the survey uh feedback as well. So I think from that process, then uh Joe Schrader, our consultant, led us through, as he has done with numerous districts across the state of Wisconsin, uh, a process to create uh and ground us in a new mission, vision, and commitments. And then from that, that built out our pillars, which are displayed there.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think initially I was skeptical going into this, wondering how is this process going to play out? How is everyone's voice going to be heard? Um, but he really did a great job. And I thank everybody who was a part of it. I I was just so impressed with everything and everybody's ideas and and what they contributed to the process. I think it went really well to start out, so I'm excited for the next one, but it's really good.
I think, you know, it's hard to take all of that information in a short period of time, but I think the structure did work well, and there were times where we wordsmithed, and there were times where it was like, all right, pick something and move on, and he he helps facilitate that well, so.
My biggest um goal is that and it's something that's been important to me since I've been here, and it will continue to be important to me, is I don't want this to be words on a website. I want this to be a meaningful um vision for our future with with um steps towards reaching our goals. And that is really important to me because people can just see it on a website and and be like, oh, that's what everybody does. But I need this, we need this to be meaningful for us to move the needle on student achievement and all the work that we've been working towards, so. Yeah.
All right, so actually, we need a motion a second to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion second. Uh, any further discussion? Anybody? Motion saying dollars in favor to approve phase one strategic plan recommendations for the mission, vision, commitments, and the district fillers. Say aye. Any opposed? Passes. And no discussion items? All right, moving on to board committee reports. First one is operations committee, uh, led by Sarah Schubert-McConne.
I have no action items, no discussion items, one informational item, food service update from the director of food service, Jamie Wilson.
Hi, everybody.
Jamie.
Hello. How you doing? Good. Good. So I do this every year. I'm trying to not make it redundant, but we feed kids. That's what we do.
You know, well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, all these pictures in my presentation tonight are taken from our kitchens, our students, our staff. In our department, we feed forty-five hundred to five thousand meals every day, every single school day, which we did forty-five thousand meals during our summer meals and summer snack program. Nine hundred and twenty thousand meals. Usually I come to you and tell you we serve like nine hundred and eighty thousand. I tell you that's going to be a million. I like round numbers, but this year is probably the first year I've seen a decrease in numbers. And I'm not telling you that's a concern in my world. Our participation per enrollment is still very strong and moving in the right direction. Um, last year, we served um two hundred and thirty-six uh out of two hundred and sixty, Monday through Friday days. That's not just school days. That's all summer long. Um, if you take out, you know, a spring day and days over holidays over Christmas, I think there's probably eight or ten days a year that we're not feeding students in this community. Um, that's something we are very proud of, um, and my team is very proud of. That brings me to thirty-nine positions, nine full-time benefited positions. Um, a very short time ago, five years probably, we had one full-time year-round benefited position in our department. But we had many people who we were were working summer and not getting the benefits of being a full or a year-round employee. So we really pushed that, just thought it was fair, and it's thought it was something that they needed. Um, the people who want to work in summer work in summer, but right now, we currently have nine full-time benefited positions. Seven of them are year-round. And that's completely funded by our department. Um, twenty-nine part-time, majority just under thirty hours a week. Um, we're very competitive food service wages um for our line-level staff, our managers. I don't know, we could use a little help there, but that's another night. Um, currently, we have two vacant positions, which up until about three weeks ago, we had five, and we've hired three more this week um in the last couple of weeks. I feel like we're always looking for five people. Um, that hasn't changed in the almost ten years that I've been here. Um, so people say they're short-staffed. I'm saying we're always understaffed, and that's not not anything new in the food service department at all. Um, this is our team, a portion of them. Um, I don't have to tell them to smile. I take a ton of pictures of them all day, every day. Um, sometimes I ask them to just slow down and just hold this for me, but I take a ton of pictures. I think that's how we tell our story.
You know, you see them out in the community too, and they are so friendly. They know the kids' names. They're so personal.
They volunteer time when they're not working with us. They were concessions. Uh, they really want to be a part of our kids' school day and beyond. Um, our school breakfast survey, uh, program, we serve free to all our enrolled students. Any student that walks into our school during the day can have a free breakfast at all of our schools. And I think everybody knows that, but we still push the heck out of it. Our breakfast participation, twenty-four, twenty-five, forty percent of our students eat breakfast with us on a regular basis. It's higher at our elementaries, lower at our middle school and high school, but we're just happy to get them there. Um, those are our numbers. All our numbers include whole grains, fresh fruit, a hundred percent fruit and juice, fruit juice, low-fat milk, cheese, yogurt. That's what we're serving for breakfast, what you see there. Our lunch participation, twenty-three, twenty-four, last year, over sixty-seven percent of our students eat school lunches every day. Which I I talked to a lot of directors in this state. Those are great numbers. Um, we don't have a lot of competition. We have a closed campus, but I also think we our our staff is inviting, and our food makes them want to come back. And I'm I'm really confident in saying that. Um, these are our pictures. This is our team. My favorite picture, I think of this whole presentation, is that one of high school kids in our salad bar. Kids will stand in line to eat. We have to tell students, had to tell students, they need a half cup fruit or vegetable. That's how we get, make sure that students, that we get paid for our meals per per meal. They are required to have that walking out into the cafeteria. If we give them choices, we don't have to tell them they need to take something they're not going to eat. Um, so we, that's our goal, is just to give them plenty of choices at every level, so they are taking what they need every day. Our goal in our department has been to change the perception of school food service. These are just some of the examples, some examples of what we did last year. Over to the left is these, this um chicken Alfredo pizza that's to die for, but if you see um, the boat we're serving in it, it's that cardboard boat. We've been trying a couple of them out. It's completely compostable. And those are the things, and you know what? I think food just looks better in it than a white boat that we usually serve. Down below that, you see this cheeseburger wrapped, like it looks like it's coming from QuickTrip. Sorry to say, but kids eat a QuickTrip, and it needs to look like that. That french fry there, we worked six weeks on. We are only allowed to bake french fries. We don't fry them like Burger King and McDonald's and everywhere else. We worked for six weeks of how do we cook a good french fry that's not soggy, that's crispy, that a kid wants to dip in some ketchup. Um, that doesn't sound like a big deal, but that keeps them coming back. Um, we, that, those were our, that was our focus. My team got tired of hearing about that. Um, that we roast vegetables. We don't steam them. We don't make them boil them in water. We give them a little flavor, and we are limited on the salt we can give, so we have found that just a little salt and pepper and some real olive oil, and we roast vegetables so they get brown, just like you probably cook at home. That's how kids will eat them, too. And they look good, and I can get them to eat Brussels sprouts and green beans and potatoes and anything that we can think of. I also, we've also served some salads. Um, so it's some fresh kale, some fresh broccoli. We are just, I don't care what they take, just try it.
Yeah.
Um, up in the upper right-hand corner, that's a breaded chicken strip. I don't know if you know this, but kids eat those. We have moved that product to a hundred percent white meat, all muscle. It's expensive. It costs a lot, and I only have a budget of about two and a half dollars for a high school meal. They like that. They want that, and that's the thing I want to give them. So that's something we've been able to do one meal a month at the high school. We want to do, be able to do more. Um, we started fresh ground beef patties, fresh frozen ground beef patties last year. We're able to source them out of, not out of Wisconsin, since we're in Upper Lakes Foods. It's our vendor. We um, are getting all of that ground beef is funneled through a um processor and just north of the cities, and we do a hundred percent ground beef patty for our middle school and high school. That's something we're really proud to be able to do. It's not fill. It's easy to recount for us for fat and sodium, because what is it? It's a hundred percent beef. So that's super easy. I don't know that we'll ever get to that at our elementaries, just because handling raw product is not something we're being comfortable at that level, but maybe we will, but that's what we're doing in our kitchen. This is what we're trying to change. When you say school food, uh, no, no, that's not our school food. That might be somebody else's, but that's not us. Um, we have this great relationship with the Bayfield co-op. So one farmer can provide what we need, so we found the co-op years ago, and they have many different farms that help support us. Um, what, twenty-eight hundred pounds of bayfield apples just started. They called us on Friday. This is how it happens because it's different every year. On Friday, they said, Jane, we're picking apples. I'm like, we already have our orders in for everything else next week. Nope, we can pick them. We can have them at your school by Tuesday. That was last Friday. How many do you want? I did a quick count, said we can do twenty-eight bushels, twenty-eight forty-pound cases, and they were, they're going to be here tomorrow, and they were picking them this weekend. That's pretty cool.
Mm-hmm.
Um, kids don't know that the apple comes from the grocery store that's been there around for three, six months. I don't care that they don't know. We give them the best quality we can.
Mm-hmm.
Same with blueberries. We'll buy the fresh ones when they're available. They're available for like two days from Bayfield. We are buying twelve hundred pounds, a hundred and twenty, ten-pound boxes from them that we will put in our freezer, and they will last until January, fresh picked in Bayfield.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I go to the farmer's market, and I'm talking to farmers there, and I'm like, how can you help us? Um, so I go to the farmer's market and I'm talking to farmers there and I'm like, how can you help us, how can we get you in our school? And this honestly took me three years, because I didn't know how it could work either, I would tell colleagues, like I said, south and southern part of the state. We can't do that in northern Wisconsin, growing period's not that long. You know what? Start a relationship, have some conversations, we can do it. And we've been doing it for the last couple of years, all this produce came from bayfield farms that you see there, this is what they do for us. They thought they couldn't do enough produce to serve to us, granted, we're not able to get every product to every school, but that high school sees a lot of benefit of it. And so does the middle school, and sometimes we're able to trickle it down into the elementaries. But we, when they were at the farmer's market on Wednesday, I said, just bring me whatever you have left and we'll pay you a fair price. They started to do that and that's how the conversation started. We have, at grower grower farms, we may. Be pushing them, they want retire, but they might stick around and just handle our produce for what they can give us. But they don't do it year-round, it's still, we, we, we'll do this until November, maybe when, if there's anything available. But we've also started to have this partnership with um, Bay Produce, and that's relatively new just in the last couple of years too. They'll call March or April and say we have tomatoes ready, Noah will give us two flats of tomatoes. Then they'll call us one week and say, Jamie, I got eight or ten, and that will continue, it's, it comes to about sixty, eighty pounds of tomatoes a week. I don't know what to do with them, I didn't know what to do with them, but I have a hard time saying no, so I bring them to my team. And I look at them and I look at them and. We decided we made fresh roasted tomato and basil soup, and we made roasted tomato and Italian sausage red pepper penne. And we make enough tomato, um, tomato product that will last hopefully into December. With their overflow, the things that they can't get rid of, so we get them at a great price. We've designed the recipe, so we just start roasting tomatoes, onions and garlic. We puree it, we freeze it, and we go from there, and we have probably two, we have three recipes for sure that we use for that. Um, I can't find low-sodium product, Friboni is a distributor up north in the Hibbin area. They are making a product just for us that has zero salt in it. And this is a meat processor, and they look at you like, no, we can't do that, we refuse to do that, I think was their words, there's no flavor. You let me add the salt as I make it, because that's the restriction that we're having the hardest time eating. I said, do make it with no sodium, give me as much flavor as you can with seasoning and we'll do the rest. And they've started that, talking about marketing at other schools and to um, healthcare. So, and they're just a, the small guy, somebody we can work with, larger companies are not really, I don't want to say they're not interested, but. They, I don't know, it's just an easier conversation to just start small. Um, this is my team at the high school, and this is what we've been working on, I talked about the french fry, we can make a great grilled cheese. We make this Cajun chicken Alfredo, there's one of our penne pastas that we're serving. Um, we made, Bay Produce called and said we got some extra basil, said how much is extra, well, we have about sixty pounds, do you know what sixty pounds of basil looks like? I didn't eat, and I brought it in and we made a lot of pesto, and we put it in the freezer and we're making a basil or a pesto pizza.
Nice.
Um, well, I like it too, but the kids are. But I have, they, these two are my managers, Cindy and Jeff, Cindy Frost and Jeff Tepso, and they. I will come in and I say I have an idea. And that's where it starts, and they kind of shake their head, roll their eyes, but they're, they're, they're what makes this happen. Is I have these ideas, we talk about it. I bring in product, they get tired of looking at it, and they figure out a way to do that, and I just couldn't do this without them, they are just so eager to please. What they really have found is there's, that they're really proud of what they make. And they're really even more proud that kids want to eat this. It's been a long time since real food's been in kitchens, in school kitchens, and I mean that. And, and we're trying to turn that perception, that's really our focus in our department. We serve after-school meals at our middle school and our high school, um, we do serve Domino's Pizza there, two days a week at the middle school and wanted. Um, the high school, as it drives kids, it brings them in the door, and it's, it's meant to be more of a grab and go thing. Um, they grab it, they go on to whatever they're supposed to be doing, or what they're in, or whatever plans they have, this is intended, the program is here. To keep kids at school. And to feed kids who are in after-school um, activities, we do hear. Feedback about how come we can't get bus kids, how come we can't, well, or how come bus kids can't eat? We don't tell them they can't, it's just sometimes the schedule doesn't work that way, we do everything we can to feed every kid, but. That's the, the one pushback we get on that program. Um, summer food service, we talked about that, four schools, fifteen sites through the community, after-school snacks, school day now programmed as other opportunities for kids to eat during the day. Um, concessions, we were there Friday night, um, homecoming, to be honest, is one of my favorite days in this district, I love it from all levels. My team loves it, they love to be part of everything, they're there at six AM and a lot of them are there for until nine PM. Working concessions, it's just such a great atmosphere, they love to see these kids. Catered events, we, we did, uh, we do salutes at service, we did. That picnic breakfast or picnic lunch. For welcome back this year, uh, we do a lot of smaller events than that, but those are the bigger ones, all-in-all cart and vending sales. We do really well with parents sending kids money or putting money in account for kids to buy extra things to add to their meal, really well. What that money does is those funds. Backfill a program that doesn't make money, they're all feeding all our kids for breakfast, it's up, loses money. But the money we make in concessions and in, for all-in-all cart food. Is what is able to help us feed all kids breakfast, it's really kind of needed, just goes from one program to the next. Um, what are our strengths, our customer service, I'm not gonna lie to you, our staff wants to feed kids, they want to be a part of their day. That's something we focused on this last year, just even trying to better that. And they really latched on to it, like talking about customer service and how we make connections. Um, we have a committed staff, large number of staff, five plus years, many with ten, we're starting to do some of that, but we have started to gain. Some more that are, that are, that five to ten. Staff, like I said, staff has a real desire to serve students and love the student interaction, they love that interaction. Um, we have a strong participation, super stable budget, our budget is our budget. We have to be self-sustaining in our program, the money's we bring in, pay our um, food costs, our labor costs, our benefit costs. Um, that program has to be self-sustained, if it's not, if we lose money, we come to you and we say. We need more money to fund our program, as long as I'm here, that's the last thing I want to do. Okay, I'm not going to do that, you can count on it, okay? I just said never, you're not gonna do that. We're, um, we have a growing social media presence, we have like twelve, thirteen hundred Facebook followers. A little older, we're trying Instagram, um, hoping that that'll do just as well, Facebook, what we see it as, it's our tool to talk to parents, right? That's really what it is, kids aren't on it, but kids, we're hoping we can do some more with Instagram and maybe start speaking to them. Um, it's funny, because you say you ask for feedback, all I gotta do is stand in the cafeteria. I mean, they offer feedback, why is this like this when you changed it, oh gosh, we love that, oh yeah, the french fry thing, I'm telling you, I had three middle schoolers in my backseat. And how was lunch, that's what I ask, okay, if I see kids, how was lunch today, did you have lunch, you don't eat lunch, let's talk about that. But the french fries suck, I mean, that's what they said to me, your french fries suck, your french fries. Your, not the middle school, your french fries suck, I take that to heart, and that's how we started this. I, I don't want that, I don't want my kids, or our, our kids to think. Our food sucks, that's not what I'm looking for. We have a really, really strong app and support across all levels. I, again, have talked to other colleagues, they all have that, we really have that, it's appreciated. Um, I see principals come through our line and eat on a regular basis, because the principals eat and kids will eat too. And they really do. Um, I believe we have a really, we've built community trust, our families know why we're here, and we're part of the school day. Our teachers make us feel like that, and our ad name feels like that. Uh, we have great partnership with some local companies, um, Upper Lakes Foods will help us train, will give us tools. Um, really do a lot for us, anything we ask, they help. Um. Viking Cold, you think that's not a local company, well, the one here is, and they support our schools with this um, Powerade for schools. Any Powerade you buy, money comes back in the form of this really big check. That we give to athletics and activities every year that comes out of their pocket, last year, I think it was. Almost five thousand, it's been as much as six, but I think we can usually count on that. What they do with that from there, I don't know, but we're working with them, we have some dollars, funding dollars to spend, and we've always been. It, we'll support all my grad party, but with product and things, but we're talking to them about. We're trying to get them to help us with a scholarship out of food service and their partnership, and we're working with that, it sounds like it's gonna happen. Where does that go, I don't know, we're just gonna have to have some meetings, but they want to support our community, they know that. Kids and dollars are important in our school, and they help us do it the right way. Um, with our funds, we have. We continue to update old efficient equipment that uses less water, gas, electricity, that's always our goal, and we're looking at how much we're repairing products. What we're doing is how do we make it more efficient, can we replace older, less. Or more efficient, less electricity or less gas. Um, increasing benefited positions, anytime we move things around, we are always looking at how can we. Um, increase those benefited positions and can we afford to do that? We do specific team building, we do in-service days, um, our team likes them, wants to be part of them, and we do food, um, food service specific. Whether it's to get their skills better or just talking about customer service or, I don't know, well-being, mental health. That's us.
Hey, hey, good job, Jamie.
Jamie, I hear you say every year you have a huge passion for your, for your jobs, the school and the food.
That shows.
And every, every year the passion does show and hasn't deteriorated to, to reach a time.
Thank you.
To speak with us, so. You did a good job there.
No questions, Ed?
Well, I, I mean, I got, I got questions, but.
Now I'm hungry, but.
I'm still waiting for, we're also waiting on that pizza you keep telling us to do.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything else for this meeting? That concludes my report.
Uh, next up is teaching and learning committee.
Alright, no action or discussion items, informational item, Kate, test director. Needs improvement and assessment on fall benchmark assessment and September thirtieth staff development day.
I just wanted to give you a little update on uh, what we've been up to the last month or so of school. Uh, our elementary and middle school teachers have been busy with fall benchmark assessment, so. Uh, as a recap, this fall, we are still using Fastbridge as our universal screener, so the fall benchmark is always kind of that well-child check. We want to get a quick check on every student to make sure that. We know where they're at in the fall, and then as Kim explained well. Teachers are looking at where do we start and how do we see gains and what specific areas do each. Does each child need to make gains in and how do they base their instruction on that? So we had a three-week assessment window, we're still utilizing Fastbridge. Uh, for kindergarten through eighth grade as our universal screener, that will change in winter when Act Twenty begins. In January of twenty twenty-five. Uh, and so plans are underway right now, and that created some. I, I think teachers and principals handled it very well, but it did create some. Kind of unknowns and uncertainties with creating goals and uh, professional learning plans that teachers worked on on the September thirtieth day. Because we're starting with one assessment and how we measure progress. Potentially, uh, on a different assessment. We, we were strategic about looking at the assessments, and I think people did a really nice job looking for similar assessments and growth. Uh, with skills that we can measure. So, uh, that September thirtieth day. I was at a number of buildings, people were working really hard, looking at their data and writing professional goals, and I think that was. A well-utilized day, and hopefully people felt uh, like they had some time to get some of those tasks done. So, in the winter, uh, now the, the work shifts to uh. Our elementary, our kindergarten through third grade teachers will receive training from me on Ames Web. For our Act Twenty screener. For just some specific assessments in October, that's our last staff development day before January, which is kind of a long gap. Uh, so we'll make sure and be providing support in the buildings when we return from winter break. Uh, that window, um. Across the state, uh, lots of work is happening, uh. This is just like a very short, like highlighted all the things we need to figure out and have laid out in terms of timelines. Uh, there are some really critical timelines that are in statute for Act Twenty. Um, that I want to make sure, I feel like, I don't know if districts are doing this without a person. I mean, this falls on principals and teachers in the majority of districts across the state that. So, as much work as it is for me, my hope is that I can create systems and structures to take that stress off of. Teachers and principals at the building to the best of my ability, um. So the timeline component will be extremely important, uh, we are required to notify parents within. A certain number of days, we're required for it to do diagnostic testing within a certain number of days, we're required to create personalized reading plans for all students. Who fall below the twenty-fifth percentile on Ames Web. Uh, as we look at our fall data, that's. Anywhere between, if, if we were required to use our fall data that we have this year, it's anywhere between. Sixty-five to eighty-five students per grade level across the district, so. Um, which could be compared to an IEP for some.
That's right.
Yeah, I think when you read the language, uh, it's very, it, it mirrors the intensity of the requirements under a. Under federal law for.
Who has to write those plans?
We're gonna work through that. Oh, uh, the, the hope is that we're gonna create, and create some really solid templates within EduClima. Um, which is, the, the company's also working on a messaging system, a secure messaging platform, which will be very helpful. Meeting all of the notification deadlines, but they will fall uh. Within the school child study team structure, teacher, principal. Lot, yep, so I think just as. We saw, I think as Kim was sharing, we did see some exciting, uh, our kids are starting the year. Uh, less at risk than they started last year, and so that year-over-year trend district-wide. Uh, building, across all buildings was, was a positive uh, sight to see in kind of the big picture data, our state. Uh, is releasing our assessment data publicly tomorrow, so I'm working with David, as soon as they. At nine thirty AM, they'll be releasing their press release from the DPI, and then we will put together a press release. Uh, that will go out locally here. Um, so that will come, and then our report cards will be, uh, we have our preliminary report cards. Those will become public in November, and they just published a date on that, so. I will follow up at the December meeting with. An overview on achievement data and report cards, I will share publicly for all here and, um. And uh, they changed the cut scores for the forward exam this year, so, um. They are saying they are not comparable to compare year-over-year data, which is making it difficult for principals and teachers to say. We grew, uh, and compared to last year, so we'll be doing the best we can to analyze and give kind of growth perspective when that data is released.
Any questions about all achievement data?
If a student gets on the, the reading plan situation, is that something that they are on for the entire school year?
Yep, so they are on a personalized reading plan. Until they can demonstrate adequate progress in grades K through two, and the district is with. With families, in collaboration with families. Uh, can use a variety of sources to determine what adequate progress is. In third grade, they must. Uh, achieve adequate progress and, not or, and be proficient on the forward exam ELA session, section, to be dismissed from a reading plan.
So that will carry with them after third grade, correct?
Okay.
Every year?
Yes, there is no language right now about if, uh, in, in third grade you don't get dismissed, that you ever. Will be, right now, there. To be, more to come is what the language has said there, I think they haven't been able to define then what. Uh, there also is more to come on the statute and policy around promotion, which. Is great advancement and how that's connected within Act Twenty as well, so.
Well, I give you guys all the credit, because I can't imagine trying to figure out a plan when you don't have clear.
Directions.
Directions, I mean, it's. What a challenge.
Mm-hmm, and it's unfunded mandate.
Right. And it, I, I would, I don't know, I would say ballpark, it consumes probably about a good thirty percent of my time every day right now. Of now more, so yeah, it is, and I. I want to take that as much as I can off of everybody working with kids. Yeah, as you have questions, if you hear things, please ask, I think, uh. There were some districts that chose to use Ames this fall. there were some districts that chose to use AIMS this fall. Um, it was, it, their rostering system was delayed by about two and a half weeks from when most people attempted to start their testing, so it was not a smooth fall. I'm glad we didn't make that choice, so hopefully they'll have that figured out by January. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else in the committee? All right, that's, that's all from me, Ed.
Next up is Budget Insurance Committee with Nick Colston.
Fun stuff. Ready, David? Uh, one action item, gifts, grants and bequests. Administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants and bequests received in September twenty twenty-four.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Discussion items, preliminary twenty-four, twenty-five, third Friday enrollment, actual transfer of service, equalization aid, equalized property valuation. All the information will be updated on October fifteenth. Um, who wants to speak about the third Friday?
So, third Friday count was early, Tim. Uh, we had to get the numbers in on Wednesday. Um, it came in a little bit, go down the bottom. It came in a little bit lower than I wanted. Um, I think I was casting around thirty-nine, ten, came in at thirty-eight, ninety-seven. Um, this is continuing our trend with declining enrollment, um, which is a statewide thing. I know usually one of the first or usually the big question is what are open enrollment numbers look like? So for this year, we had open enrollment, what, a hundred and eighty-two kids when you compared to last year, which was a hundred and eighty-seven-nine. Obviously, we had three additional kids that opened and rolled out. Open and roll in, sorry, everybody's misspoken beginning. Open and roll in, we had fifty-one kids that opened and rolled in. Uh, last year we had fifty that opened and rolled in. Um, our goal as a district, I mean, we wanna get down to zero. That, that's what we wanna get to. Um, but, you know, it's gonna be a difficult thing. It's gonna take a lot to get us to the point where all kids wanna come here or at least we net out to zero. One thing I know when I talk to people is, man, you guys get, you get destroyed on open enrollment. Where are all these kids going? Out of those hundred and eighty-two, ninety-eight of them went to what I call a brick and mortar school. So they went to Northwestern and they went to, uh, they went to Maple or they went to Solon. Uh, of that, it was eighty kids went to Maple, eighteen kids went to Solon. That means the other eighty-four kids we have, they went to charter online schools. So they're going out for something that we don't have right now. Currently, we don't provide. Um, it is something that has come up during a strategic planning meeting, so that's something down the road, but that is a significant investment. Um, so it's something that, um, if we ever go down that road or when we go down that road, it's gonna take a lot of planning ahead of time. Um, one thing I'd like to point out is, so Northwestern took eighty of our kids. So if we, if open enrollment didn't exist, we would have four thousand and twenty-eight kids. Northwestern took eighty of those. That's the equivalent of two percent. So Maple took two percent of our kids. We took um, three percent of the Maple kids. So the exact number is thirty-two Maple kids decided they wanted to go to Superior instead. So that's three percent. So in actuality, we are doing better than, you know, we're pulling in a higher percentage of kids from Maple than we're losing to Maple. On the Solon Sprint side, Solon Sprint took point four percent of our kids. We took five percent of their kids. Solon cannot be happy with us because we're pulling a larger percentage of their kids and it's just because they have a smaller amount. So we took sixteen Solon Sprint kids that settled. Um, like I said, it's an ongoing thing where we have to figure out how we can do it and it'll be quite a lot to publicize on it. This referendum, a lot of the stuff that I'm gonna talk about is going to be around referendum. Um, how do you get kids in? You provide them different opportunities, more opportunities, better opportunities. Um, this referendum that we have out there is what's going to be the, you know, there's gonna be less opportunities at the referendum that's passed. Um, yeah, I think it's, we're trending flat on losing kids. We're kinda doing a little bit better, gaining kids. The other part is, I just think back of on the open enrollment side. When you have eighty-four kids, or forty percent of all the kids that open or roll out are going to online charter schools, that wasn't even a thing ten years ago. Um, Lake Superior, we lost eleven kids that went on to Maple. Um, if we didn't lose the Lake Superior kids, all of a sudden we're talking about eleven of those kids. That's a significant trending down of open enrollment. So I think we're, we're going in the right direction. Um, last year we started or implemented the plan where we reached out to every single kid that opened her rolls and we try to go, you know, try and get answers on why they left. Um, we're gonna keep modifying that survey. Last year I think we got this mid-thirties responses. Majority of them were, I want my kid going to an online school. So it's hard to argue with that, so.
What was our number last year? Do you have that?
Open.
No.
Friday. Yeah, I think it was.
Agree.
Four thousand twenty-one.
And do we see any with the open enrollment with a hundred and eighty-two kids? Obviously the charter, do we see any grade trends? Do we see any trends where we see one grade having the most leaving? Um, is there?
Oh, there's.
It's just spread.
Like, kindergartners are twelve. So it was twelve, nine, fifteen, twelve, eleven, twelve, eight, fourteen, twenty-two in eighth grade, thirteen in ninth, ten, ten and tenth, sixteenth and eleventh and twenty-three in twelfth.
Okay. So that is pretty spread.
Huge.
Yeah.
One nice thing is the eleventh grade has sixteen and that by far is our biggest class. So now
Sure.
It's a good thing. I think we're keeping a high status more than. And I think just remember I seen from the school year, um, it's amazing what it is out of the schools now and in every school, it seems like there's just a different attitude. I like to think, you know, we might've, we might've made that curve on COVID. Kids might actually be knowing how to act at school and enjoying school. It's, it's real nice for a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So I had a third Friday though.
Have any idea how many kids don't attend the four K program?
Um, so.
Is that a number that we have? Jen, do you know that?
Majority do, really.
Majority of us do. Since COVID, so pre-COVID, I've already told you, I was really confident that ninety-seven percent of our kindergarten students went into okay. Both COVID numbers fluctuate a little bit. So I don't know, do you do?
So looking at the numbers, that four K last year, we had two hundred and thirty-one four K students. This year we have two hundred and thirty-five, two hundred and forty-five kindergartners. So I'd see.
It's a very high percentage.
I feel it's really guts.
So your question being like, are the four K numbers addicting our kindergartners?
The eleventh grade at three sixty, when they're gone.
Or it's gonna be gonna be a problem.
It's gonna be a problem.
Which is why our budget projections moving forward for years three, four and five are much worse than years one and two.
That's true.
My hope is the flattening is our fifth grade class. It seems like after fifth grade, we're not dropping as, as steadily as we.
Yeah.
It's like the new number is two fifty, right?
Which is, and the scary part of that, like I just read about, the way, the way it went from seven thousand kids um, less than ten years ago to now there're less than five thousand. It is just, it's, and you're closing multiple schools, right?
Mm-hmm.
Can I talk about the next one?
Yep. Screen, what's next? Yeah, children. All right, National Justice Service Equalization Aid equals on equalized property valuation and levy information will be in October fifteenth. This is where um, finances in the state of Wisconsin Public Education messed up because we've been running since July one, but they're gonna tell us what we get on October fifteenth. Um, preliminary budget, it's gonna be published in the paper on Friday? Friday, yeah. Um, when you guys see that number, it's gonna be different than when you look at this revenue expenditure. The reason it's gonna be different is I'm going off the assumption that the referendum will pass. The reason and the sole reason I'm going off that number for it is I don't want us to publish what it is if it doesn't pass.
Mm-hmm.
Then pass and then we spike up the levy. So this is kind of the worst case, you know, scenario. Backs a little bit, but that's what I want the public to know. Cause I don't want them to think there's a gonna be a switch. So when you see that number, the number's gonna be fifty-nine point seven million dollars when you look at my revenue expansion expenditures here, I'm sure it's almost fifty-six four. Um, that takes into consideration the two point five on a, uh, the referendum and then also some money that's gonna go down since I've done the Esser money, so. Um, so again, October fifteenth, uh, that is the day that all of this is managers get up at like four AM and keep hitting refresh at DPI to see what our aid is. Our, our aid unfortunately is going to go down and that's gonna affect, directly affects the tax levy. So just be as board members, when somebody comes up to you and says, hey, you know, why is the tax levy going up? You can turn around and tell, because the state's not giving us as much aid. Um, so that's directly driving any kind of like increase that we have.
And is that a direct result of the property value line up? Or not necessarily?
It is decline in enrollment, property value, and it's called shared expenses. It's expenses as well. Um, so it was a, a number that's um, was artificially higher last year, we should say. Um, to do with our defense payments. We're actually getting back in like where we should be, cause two years ago, around thirty-three million in aid, last year around thirty-five, this year we're anticipating mid-thirty-twos. The other real variable or curve ball is the Milwaukee, Milwaukee's a mess right now. In Milwaukee, if something is minor changes in Milwaukee, it has ramifications throughout the state. So that's where, uh, when they came up with their equalization aid estimate on July one, which is required by a state, um, they said, take it with a grain of salt, because this number is gonna change, but nobody will tell you which way it's gonna go. So. So, so the big thing will be the, the budget getting published on, on Friday. High level.
You mentioned Esser. How did we do with spending those dollars and what, what's left? Isn't that expired twenty twenty-five or did it already expire?
It's like September fifteenth.
Okay.
So we did have, so I had the option, I could have, I could have pushed it up yesterday.
Yeah.
Pushed a bunch of money to fund that one, or I could do some moving up numbers, keep absolutely rolling into this year. Um, get our teachers' expense from September one to September thirtieth. Still, uh, computers that we purchased. Well, given on both of them, I burn up the remaining money out of there. We will have zero on not giving the state a penny, but so.
So we're, we did, we were able to, just to reiterate, we were able to use some of that money to offset some of our expenses for this year up until September thirtieth.
Excellent.
And that was one that, you know, we were aiming to figure out where we're gonna go at. It's, it was, it's been since December of last year, we're saying, I don't have a burning all this year. What are my options? And I kind of later, so here are those, created the budget ahead of time and said, hey, I got computers, buses and employee costs. Are you a hundred percent sure I can do that? I said, absolutely.
Just to skip like a little bit more out of it and one more budget cycle.
Yeah, it's, it's, and it's, it's gonna be, like, a lot of people are mad that they're, are not set with Esser just going away, because it's a lot to manage. But man, I like that little, that was a little move of a parachute for this year to make sure that we can make it through, so that's, that's.
Well done. That is, yeah, a lot of managing.
Other questions on that? Informational items, uh, Lake Superior building update?
Oh, so we officially sold the Superior on Friday. I sold it with a check of nine hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety cents, which was interesting, because I couldn't ever be anywhere near downtown, so it just felt weird running Milwaukee. So like, all these people on the line, I have a hundred thousand dollar check in my pocket.
Need a bodyguard.
Yeah. Uh, Ryan Nelson, who's the P and R, the buyer, uh, has been great to work with as far as, we even left some more equipment in there. Um, then he's gonna let us pull it over Thursday, because I didn't wanna pull our equipment out on Thursday. Close be delayed and also, so he's pulling over, moving, just pull it over Thursday. Um, it was, we actually spoke a little with the mayor, because he was involved with the mayor about it. And then when I spoke to Ryan on the, on Friday, I was thinking, can you give me any inside information? He was like, it was, it's gonna be housing. He goes, but a portion of that is going to be a formal housing, um, with, he said, similar to.
Oh.
It is some, my hope is with that, that will get families to move in there instead of just, you know, people with kids.
Mm-hmm.
So it was very good and he's been great to work with and I think it's a, hopefully it'll be a, a workover as well at that.
Budget hearing scheduled for Wednesday, October thirtieth at five PM.
Recent big meeting, October thirtieth. I think all of you guys have gone through it at least once, right? So, um, the thing that's gonna be different about this year is you guys are gonna approve two budgets. You can be on with the refer in the passing and we're on about the passing. We just had to do that because we have to have these numbers in and that, those numbers will be in for the tax levy. Um, our tax levy, regardless of what is passed, the referendum, passing or not, is actually gonna stay pretty much the same because of the much of all that numbers that are taking the talent into it. Um, so you'll have the books, um, I, I gotta start, maybe the books uh, October fifteenth. That way you guys will be able to look at it and see at a high level, um, see what the tax levy's gonna look like. Again, I'm gonna reiterate, make sure you tell people when they say their success value, when I'll tell them it's not a direct correlation. It's gonna be totally different. Um, so. Um, when it gets published on the Friday in the paper, you're looking at a tax levy of about twenty-four point nine million, so. And it was, compared to twenty-one point three last year, and as I said, we lose about three million dollars in EQA. But I'm just telling you, so.
Then, uh, fine ten revenue expenditure?
This number's been updated. I think it's fifty-six four on one side and it's five on the other. That number is going to keep changing up until probably the day of our budget hearing, just so we can get as close as we possibly can. Um, the only thing I always tell people is be, the big number you wanna look like, it's looking at the line. And I know I've like had feedback, like, hey, you gotta make sure you spend as much as you have, cause you're getting that line. What I tell them is it's like, if you go to the grocery store and all of a sudden your meat costs a little more, you might spend a little less on meat paid or on your dairy side. So it's, that's kind of where it fluctuates. I look at the split number on the bottom and then go and evaluate the variances on top to make sure there's hidden problems.
Really, does that, anything, any other questions? concludes my report?
Thanks, Dave. And miss.
Next up is Personal Negotiation Committee with Brooke Taylor.
I have one action item. Administration recommends approval of the October twenty twenty-four new hires and separations report.
Motion to approve, tag it.
Motion, second, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have no discussion items and no informational items. That ends my report.
Said all right.
Yeah.
Next up Legislative Committee with Laura Gavsky.
I have no action items, no discussion items. I have one informational item. Um, and that is, um, that there are a hundred and thirty-seven school referendum questions that'll be on the ballot in November. Um, so as a reminder, November election is quickly approaching and the nation's eyes are fixed on Wisconsin. While the presidential, senate and new state legislative districts continue to draw attention, when Wisconsin voters go to the polls, they will find that, uh, find a hundred and thirty-seven local school district referendums on the ballot in a hundred and twenty districts. Um, there's more information on the WASD website under Legislative Updates. They have no other informational items.
Thank you. And to finish up, a couple of quick notes. Uh, next meeting is October fourteenth next week. Uh, we have another strategic planning meeting next week, the sixteenth as well. It's our final meeting for that. Um, community referendum meetings all throughout October and some in November, I think, right? For November? What did I say?
November.
Okay, October.
That'll be too late, yeah.
Um, and then school visits start tomorrow with board members and throughout the week and next.
So it's a very busy one.
For that, can I get a motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn?
Okay. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody wanna stay here?
Okay.
Okay.